Welcome to the City of Arcola City Council's Special Meeting. A Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand and five, beginning at six P. M. at Arcola City Hall, located at one three two 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 Highway six, Arcola, Texas, seven seven five eight three. For the purpose, considering the following items. The City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas, deserves the right to meeting full session on any of the below items you can need to write, and if applicable pursuant to authorization by Title V, Chapter five, five one of the Texas Government Code. It is now six oh one P. M. I call this meeting to order, announcing that we do have a call. Tonight's invocation will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Greg Abar, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Fred Burton.
Okay, Lauren, thank you for letting us all gather here safely tonight. Please to come into our hearts and our minds and help us make the best decisions for our city and its citizens. In Jesus' name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite.
All right, roll call. Councilmember Ellen Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Abar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Greg Abar, Councilmember Rosemary Bigby.
Here.
Councilmember Florence Jackson.
Not here.
Councilmember, yes, not present, and Councilmember Fred Burton.
Present.
Also present is David Olson, City Attorney, and the Florida City Secretary, and David, and Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator. Uh, just for the record, just to let everybody know, we will be moving City Council Public Comments to the end of the agenda, because this is a, I figured there would be more people here, this is the budget, give everybody an opportunity to talk, and then we all can address their concerns. So, uh, at this time, we will move to say, are there any public comments, Madam Secretary?
Yes, Mayor, we have now two, but, um, the first one is Priscilla Graham.
Um, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
First giving honor to God. Um, what, what, the reason why I'm up here today is because, um, the staff here at City Hall wanted to take a moment just to acknowledge Ms. Bigby and her loss, and, um, we want you to know that we appreciate you, and we just took up a small token to show you that, and to just say thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, agenda two, do we have any more public comments?
Yes, Mayor. Now, did you want this as public comment, or you want to do consent agenda portion, because that's after?
Consent agenda.
Okay. So, that is a public comment, yes, Mayor. So, you know, consent agenda items, yeah, uh-huh. So that's, because it's about the budget, so it's consent agenda items.
Do you want to wait and do it under the public hearing? Just so it's on the record, or do you want? I mean, it's up to you. You do it under the public comments, you can do it under the budget hearing, or you can wait till council comments. At the end, it's up to you.
I don't think it changed nothing. I don't think this probably changed nothing, because I feel like, yeah.
No, we, we just had, since it's a public hearing, if you want to do it under the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll do it under the public hearing, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, that would say, do we have any more?
No, Mayor, that would be it for a public consent agenda.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, so now, moving on.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Two, Public Hearing. Public, um, Hearing A, on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. We do have one person, and that would be Councilmember Burton.
Yeah. It's no time limit on the public hearing, right?
No, it needs to be reasonable, though.
I, I'll be reasonable, just saying it's no time limit. Well, no, you all put a budget together, and we put money in certain departments, and I can't remember one time the city ever put a budget together and then put shit in the pool. We put twelve thousand dollars into the summer program, in addition. Let me change it, I want to make sure I have it right. We put twelve thousand dollars in the photography and website. And then we put sixty-two hundred dollars for annually for centers to come bring uniforms, clean them up and all that, take it back and forth. And then you put money into, uh, you added money to the summer program. Abar, Abar asked you three months ago, was Honey Grove going to be fixed? And you told me at that time that you would see to it it would get fixed. And I'm here to say that, why wouldn't the streets, which has a lot to do with infrastructure? You put money in a lot of things, I ain't seen nothing in infrastructure.
It's in a different category.
Streets?
Mayor, do you want me to address that?
Mayor, it's up to you, we can do the public hearing of back and forth, you can just?
Yeah, let him do, let him say what he has to say.
And then you?
I would like to hear, and I'm trying to sure to, I gathered on Facebook, of course, should have said, why the streets wasn't put in there? I mean, I'm looking for, well, I should be looking for that.
Let me, let me handle it first. We, we got certificates of obligation to address, if you'll see, to address drainage, to address streets, and also to, you know, for public, the other public infrastructure. So that's, that's actually what the certificates of obligation are for. So that is taken care of, and that's the certificate of obligation that we, that we, uh, got this summer.
Well, why are we putting so much money into photography and website?
Well, we, we utilized the photographer last year for my State of the City, uh, presentation that we did at the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, and there are some other things, we want people to know, this city is growing, we want people to know about it, we're going to advertise it.
No problem with that. We always advertise, but it never cost us money like this.
You never, you had to think, the vision is a bit bigger now.
Well, don't matter, still, money is money. And this city don't have money to be throwing out there like that. And, and when did the, uh, the centers, why we have to pay for uniforms? I mean, I understand paying for uniforms, why we have to pay to get clean?
Well, what the centers', uh, contract is going to be for is so that our, our young, you know, our people out in our maintenance, they can represent well over there, all in the city. Sometimes, the, the uniforms that they have now, they don't have enough of them, sometimes they're wearing their own clothes, sometimes, so I need to make sure that they have enough uniforms. Centers will come in and take, they'll get two weeks worth of, uh, each one of them will get two work, two weeks worth of uniforms. One week, well, they'll go through one week, they'll come and pick them up, and they'll wash them and take care of them, bring them back for them. Because we want, we, you know, we want the city to be represented well. And additionally, we have some people who are in public works with our department now, with our maintenance department, and they shared how some of the uniforms, like, out in the heat, these guys are wearing jeans and stuff like that. So there's some special types of, uh, type of, uh, material that they can use that breathe a little bit better and stuff like that. So we, we're looking to make sure that they're safe, and to make sure that they're able to represent the city professionally.
And what is this fifty thousand dollars for, uh, fifty thousand dollars for the, uh, equipment, what?
Equipment that they may need in the maintenance department.
It hasn't been identified exactly what we're going to spend money. We just wanted to have a blanket item in case something comes up, that we need some kind of equipment for our maintenance department.
Well, since we have spent talking about money, there was an email sent to you three of you guys, and I haven't got a response back yet. And I was looking for, if anybody had that information that I asked for you all, from you all.
The City Hall offered you the opportunity to meet with Annette and the bookkeeper.
Greg.
And get the information that you needed. And we're not going to sit there and, you know, print thousands of pieces of paper.
I, I didn't ask you to print, you gave me.
All you need to do is come in and make an appointment.
No, no one called me and said we need to make an appointment, nobody asked me, nobody.
Well, you said that at the beginning.
What I'm saying is that, you know, this is going to take thousands and thousands of paper to look at, twenty-eight thousand dollars.
We don't know exactly how many.
Do we know the exact amount?
Why would we waste the paper if you can come in and look at it yourself?
Do we know the exact amount?
The exact amount of what?
What was spent on the investigation.
We told you last week.
You told me I wanted to see the evidence.
You did.
And, 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 and asking for invoices, it's not thousands and thousands of paper, of course, you didn't get that number, right? For invoices in buildings.
First of all, we're not going to give out invoices for, first of all, the city doesn't have invoices. Secondly, we're not going to give out.
They weren't billed.
We, we're not going to give out information on an invoice of any, of any kind, anyway. That's for an ongoing investigation.
This is where it kind of reels back to you, we're having a public hearing on the budget.
Yeah, okay. Mayor, I will also state that the twelve thousand, eight thousand is to maintain the website. Okay, do we have anybody else for the public hearing? Uh, Madam?
You might ask.
Is anybody else out in the audience for you, for the public hearing, for the, uh, budget? Yes. You, you are?
Yes.
Yes, I'm on this.
And could you state your name for the record when you get to the front page?
Hi, my name is Olufesayo Mandela. I just wanted to, I guess, find out more about what, what the proposed, um, I think I have some information here about, it's two hundred and eleven thousand, and, uh, twenty point three four, uh, percent increase or something, or, or, or?
Oh.
For the budget, for this budget. I wanted to get more information on what that would, uh, that, what that would be for, and?
So I'm going to be reading a seven-page document, and there it will give you some details.
Okay.
But I think also, while he's standing here, I think that's, that's the increase in what the, what the county is increasing. You know, your property taxes are going to increase just because your property value is going to increase. Uh, but it's not because we're increasing the budget, I mean, our tax rate.
Oh, I thought this would impact that, the budget would impact the, the tax rate as well.
So typically, that kind of happens. This year, we knew early on that the tax rate was not going to change. So the only thing that changed was the value of your home. This con, this particular council and mayor have zero control over the value of your home. That is Fort Bend County C.A. But the tax rate will remain.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I know, I, I know, I'm next on there with the State of the City.
No, we got one more public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Public hearing B, proposed tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Madam Secretary?
I don't have anybody for public hearing.
The public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to Agenda Item Three, Presentation, Mayor.
Yes, I, I would like to move my State of the, uh, City Presentation to the end after we've conducted the business of the city.
He said to after closing of the session, if there's one?
Uh, no, right before that.
Okay, right before, okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, Tax Rate Adoption Items. Please, just for your, for council's records, you have another, um, sheet that says M and O, Debt Services and Proposed Tax Rate, that was, um, not in your, well, it wasn't your notebook, but it has been updated and corrected, so you should have it on your, just in front of your, um, your seat. And that will be, um, City Administrator Annette Goldberg, Dr. Annette Goldberg.
Mayor and Council, we are proposing a debt service of, uh, let's see, point one three nine seven five five in the tax rate.
I make a motion that the city approve the debt service rate of point one three nine seven five five.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, seconded by Councilmember Johns, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed.
Agenda Item Four B. Discussion and possible action regarding the adoption of the portion of the tax rate to fund the maintenance and operations of the city for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and Council, the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six proposed M and O tax rate is point five zero nine eight six four.
I make a motion that the city approve the maintenance and operation tax rate of point five zero nine eight six four.
Six seven. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, seconded by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed.
Agenda Item Five, Regular Agenda Items. All items here are to be discussed, considered, and possible action. Five A, Petition for Release from ETJ of City of Arcola, a twenty-six point two one six one acre tract of land situated in the A.B. Langermans Survey App Rule Number four five six, Fort Bend County, Texas. Being more particularly described by meets and bounds on Exhibit A attached here too, and made a part of here, hereof of all purpose, the property. City Attorney David Olson.
Sure. Uh, Council, Mayor and I have talked about this, we're, we still have a discrepancy with the meets and bounds description, and so we need to, we really just need to work with Mr. Patel to clean that up. Once we clean that up, and bring you a, you know, valid petition with the meets and bounds that, that matches a legal description, then obviously we'll be in a position we can address the petition. But right now, I think a motion to table it, until we clean up the, any discrepancies in the legal description, we'd be appropriate.
I make a motion to re-table the, uh, the, um, petition for release from the ETJ of the City of Arcola, until staff can work out the exact size of the piece of property.
So, motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, seconded by Councilmember Johns, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, to table? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion is passed.
Agenda Item Five B. Arcola City Hall Landscaping Project, for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, General Fund. Mayor Vida V. Williams.
Uh, I was talking to, um, the maintenance guys, and also, uh, I'm going to put in, have a call into the Fort Bend County Master Gardens Project. Um, we want to, uh, enhance the landscaping out here in front of the City Hall. Uh, since we didn't have to spend any funds for the parking lot, we want to use portions of that to try to just make it up, pretty it up a little bit out here.
Yes.
And so, uh, uh, so that's, that's what this is all about. And so if I can entertain a motion to, and it may not be twenty-five thousand dollars, it just, one of, one part of the landscaping is also to try to, um, level out some of this, this property over here next door, because even though we don't have a community center right now, there are things that we can be doing within, in the community, and with, uh, young, with young folk out there without, uh, you know, it's a safety issue right now, because you've got too many dips in, it's not, it's not level. So that's, that's, that's part of it, too, and I've talked to some of the maintenance guys regarding, uh, what may be necessary for that. So that's how I came up with the twenty-five thousand dollars.
So that's, that's just a number that we reach in the sky and come up with, or?
I just said, we talked to, I talked to some of the maintenance guys, and we talked about what potentially some of the, uh, the loads of, uh, material that may be needed, and those types of things. So I, I have talked to them about what it may take, so that's why I can, that's why I have a number.
So it's really just an estimate, not to exceed that amount.
Not to exceed.
It could also be even less than that amount.
Absolutely.
That seems fair.
So. Can you hear me?
I make a motion to approve the, approve the, uh, portfolio landscaping project for, uh, to not exceed the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
So. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, seconded by Councilmember Johns, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed.
Agenda Item Six, Contracts and Agreement. Discussion and consideration of and possible action to approve a contract with Centers to participate in their uniform program for maintenance uniforms, for an amount not to exceed sixty-three hundred dollars annually, General Fund, Mayor Vida V. Williams.
Uh, that's the, um, contract that we just talked about in terms of the uniforms for, uh, the maintenance guys. If anybody has any questions after, you know, from my previous, uh, explanation, please, give it. It's also in the packet.
I think that's a, a reasonable amount, and it's a good idea for the people to represent the city, and city uniforms to look good. I mean, that's just good business.
Yeah, they're working in the sun, I mean.
Yeah, they're working in the summer, they won't be cool, this material is different, and they keep, helping them to keep cool.
For when?
That's, for their health also. And the sixty-three hundred dollars for a whole year? I've seen people spend that some frivolous stuff, and that's not frivolous.
Uh, and plus, you know, we, we, we made a conscious effort. Maintenance has not had a, an investment in it in some time. Uh, they're, to be honest with you, part of that, the money that's, that's, that's there for maintenance, uh, they have part of few things over there they need investment in over there. And so we, we made a conscious decision that in this year, that we were going to invest in the maintenance, and so, um, and so that's part of it.
And also, I mean, the maintenance people are going to feel much better about themselves when they have official City of Arcola uniforms, and the public is going to recognize them with official Arcola uniforms, instead of the hot pot.
So, so they're not wearing uniforms now?
They have shirts now, they wear their own jeans.
Okay, they're not wearing uniforms now?
We just said they weren't wearing uniforms.
You just said uniforms.
We're doing it a different way.
I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to Greg.
Well, you're talking to.
Okay, I'm talking to Council. So, yeah. So, um, if I can entertain a motion on that?
I make a motion. We okay the amount of sixty-three hundred dollars, for the people to have some uniforms.
So.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Bigby, seconded by Councilmember Johns, all in favor?
Aye.
You have to leave it.
Okay, so, uh, the motion is passed.
Agenda Item Seven, Ordinances and Resolutions. Order A, Discussion and Consider, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Ordinance Approving and Adopting the City of Arcola, Texas, General Budget for Fiscal Year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Making Appropriations for the City for such year as reflected in said budget, establishing the procedure for intra-budget transfers, and containing other provisions related to the subject. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator, and this will need a record vote.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Uh, I have before you a memorandum that we put together. It's seven pages, I promise not to read every word, but I do, I do want to give you the highlights of this budget. So before you, we are proposing an FY twenty-five, twenty-six annual budget. That annual budget, as you know, commences in just a few weeks, October first, twenty twenty five, and it will conclude September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. We began this process in June, and I want to thank the department heads. I have Police Chief Carr, we also have Jennifer Hugh that was with us. Uh, Priscilla Graham helped us, and we worked late nights, as well as Councilmember. So I'm very grateful for the team that we put together, because we have a great budget before you. The proposed tax rate, as you know, um, is in here. So if I can refer to the bottom of page one, it tells you the change from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. The General Fund increased the proposed FY twenty-six budget is a nine percent increase. We are asking for a five million, one hundred thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollar budget. For the taxable value, as you can see, the taxable value that was provided to us by the county is an increase of two percent. So the twenty-six taxable value is two hundred and forty-six million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The tax rate, as stated earlier, the tax rate will remain the same if the vote is taken at the next Agenda Item. The rate is point six four nine six one nine. The sales tax, we are anticipating an eight percent increase in sales tax. FY twenty-six sales tax, we are anticipating nine hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars. For the enterprise fund, you will see at the bottom of the page that there is a, a lower, or negative eight percent, uh, from FY twenty-five. That's primarily due to the number of, of tax that we anticipate that will not be needed. In addition to that, the sales of a, of the land that was owned by the City Chief Tech Stock has been moved over, that amount of money has been moved over to the General Fund. On the top of page two, I wanted to present to you what we currently have in the bank. Uh, we refer to it as a cash investment. Tax Pool is what we know as our savings account, that has been earning four point three percent. We have a total of twelve million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars in our savings account, earning four point three percent, we're very grateful. Frost Bank is what we use as a checking account. We have six accounts with that bank. Currently, we have one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So the total cash and investment the City of Arcola has is a record number, thirteen million, seven hundred thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And I'm so grateful for that. The next category is property tax values. As, as stated, the tax value, the certified tax value that comes to us from Fort Bend County Appraisal District ha, does have a twenty percent increase from, uh, FY twenty-four. The, this represents an increase of fifty-one million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Again, it's a twenty percent increase from last year's certified value of two hundred and fifty-eight million, fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. Of this increase, thirty-seven million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight is new taxable value added to the twenty twenty-five, from Mayor and Pro Tem's role. Added in the appeals by property owners is nine point seven million, less the terrors of seventy-two point one million. The twenty twenty-five certified taxable assessed value is two hundred and thirty-six million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Again, that's a two percent increase over this year. The next category is property tax rate. I presented to you six tax years. As you can see, for the, for twenty-four, twenty-five, and the proposed twenty-six, that tax rate is remaining the same, point six four nine six nineteen. As you can see, it is lower from FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Moving on to page three, the sales tax. As anticipated, we are, uh, hoping to get an eight percent increase of our sales tax. So that's, eight percent represents sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. We are hoping to receive a total of nine hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars for our sales tax. For compensation and staffing, as you know, Mayor and Council, we have two pay scales. One is used for the police, and then one is used for civilians. They are all used for full-time city employees. Exempted from that is, uh, City Administrator, Financial Consultant, the Police Chief, and Municipal Judge. We are on control. For FY twenty-six, uh, I am proposing a three percent cost of living increase, that is normal, that has been his. That has been historically used for each budget year and I hope that we support that. In addition to that, we're looking at a wellness benefit of a thousand dollars for each employee. That is taxable, that is also pensionable, and we are hoping that, uh, employees will use it for any visitations to the doctor, for dental work, and for life issue. I will tell you that the deductible for fully cross-brush shell out of pocket is five thousand dollars. So a thousand dollars does help offset that five thousand, let's be fair, per year. Also, in the budget, uh, we are not including any more full-time employees or FTEs and we're not reclassifying it. We remain the same as the current year. For group insurance, as I mentioned earlier, we have Blue Cross Blue Shield. I want you to know that the loss ratio that we went into the market is a hundred and twelve percent. What that means is we put in money and then we cut, our premiums did not cover the expenses. They had to take out seventy-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars from a pool to offset our premiums. A loss ratio of eighty to eighty-five percent is what they look for. So as you can tell, with a hundred and twelve percent, we have truly exceeded that number. So I'm so grateful and I'm so pleased to present just a four percent increase in health insurance premiums for FY twenty-six. I'm really grateful. Some cities saw a twenty-five percent increase in their premiums, I'm grateful. For TMRS, TMIS is our pension. They have actuaries that come in and they determine what the city has to fund to keep that pension balanced. So for FY twenty-six, we, the city, will contribute two point seven one percent of gross salary. That is a decrease of point sixteen percent because currently the city is paying two point eight seven percent of gross. As you can see, the pension plan listed here is not changed. Each employee contributes five percent of their gross salary to the pension. The city matches one-to-one and the years required for vesting is five years. For debt insurance and capital funding, I am so pleased to announce that the City of Arcola historically went into the market. We had never gone to the market. We went into the market with five point four million dollars for streets, for drainage, and for the wastewater treatment expansion. We started out in a meeting on May the fourth, we started out with an A and I got excited. And at the end of the call, they said, we have not determined whether you're going to be an A-plus or an A-minus. But I was just happy with an A. So shortly thereafter, we got an A-plus. But when we actually went into the market, we went into a market with a rating of a double A. And the reason that is so important is because that determines our interest rate. There are cities surrounding us that have a B or a B-minus. So for us to go into the market for the first time and get a double A rating, uh, you all should be so pleased. And again, it took a team, Chief Carr was part of that team, I had financial advisors, uh, the mayor and I. As a matter of fact, that particular day that we met with standard and force to defend our financial position and to determine our rating, we had an incident at City Hall, we had to close it. And so I said to the mayor, where are we going? What are we going to do? And she says, we're going to the park, they have internet, and we're not going to cancel this meeting. And so I'm so grateful, but I, I will tell you, it took a team effort. There were, there were seven or ten pages worth of questions that we had to answer and defend, and all of us together did. And so I'm so grateful that we're at the double A. As stated, it's five point four million dollars and, uh, this is going to be used for the wastewater treatment expansion. As you know, we're taking the, the treatment plant up to one point eight millions gallons per day. And Councilmember Burton, when we talked about streets and roads, that, this is where the funding is coming from and it's also going to include drainage. So for the budget overview for general fund on the bottom of page four, again, we're asking for Mayor and Council to approve five million, one hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, uh, for the budget for FY twenty-six. It is a nine percent increase over this year. On page five, at the top, I want to talk a little bit about a general fund reserve. The city plans to maintain a fund balance reserve of eighty-seven percent. And, uh, as you can see for the general fund, uh, to the right at the nine-thirty, we have a fund balance of three point five million. You go down to the enterprise and to the right, which is nine-thirty, we have a sixteen point seven million dollar, uh, fund balance. I will state to you that the sixteen point seven million dollars also includes our assets. Our assets for the wastewater treatment plant as well as our water treatment plant. So those are capital assets that are included in the fund balance. Uh, a little bit further down, you will remember that in twenty-twenty-two, there was a rate study to see whether our water and sewer rates should be increased. And consciously, the City Council and Mayor decided not to increase. So the rates that you see at the bottom of page five, as well as the top of page six, are rates that we currently have. Uh, the FY twenty-six enterprise fund, as you can see, uh, it, there will be a decrease. The majority of the decrease were in water caps. Again, we don't believe that we'll need as many. And also the land to textile to move the money back to general fund. For capital projects, we have allocated for FY twenty-six, large equipment, fifty thousand, and maintenance equipment, twenty-five thousand. So, uh, we, we don't know today what we're going to need, but it is wise to put something in the budget just in case. Again, we come to you during mid-year, we can move that money if we don't lose it, or we need additional money. But it's wise to put something there just in case. Top of page six, I'll talk a little bit about the, uh, 4B Corporation. As you know, the 4B Corporation receives a fourth of the total sales tax. 4B Corporation today has one point three million dollars. We are, will use it, we were supposed to use it for the wastewater treatment plant, uh, the infrastructure and the Arcola Community Center. We have not used it this fiscal year and we don't anticipate using it. We do want to keep it in our savings account so that we can earn the four point three percent that it's currently giving. Last but not least is the hotel tax fund, what I call the hot tax. The hot tax is a state-regulated, uh, percentage, point oh six percent of the cost of a room goes to the city. And it is due on the twentieth of each month, uh, for the following month, for the previous month, I'm sorry. And so as of today, the city receives on average about three thousand dollars a month. Uh, in the, in the savings account and checking account, we have total forty-nine thousand dollars today. Hot funds are used exclusively for projects and programs that directly promote tourism and the hotel and motel industry. So the hot tax is strictly regulated and we're very mindful when we use that. So in conclusion, I, I just want to thank Mayor and, and Councilmembers for your consideration. Again, this was a team effort. I will tell you, it was a labor of love. Uh, I have not really been as in, involved in budget in, in the last four years, but it, it brought back some good numbers. Uh, so again, I want to thank the chief, I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Abar, Mayor Priscilla Graham, uh, and also my, uh, Court Director, um, Jennifer Hugh. So Mayor, what you have before you, I put in your box, is all of the budgets. And, and I, I want to state that this is really the first time that we have actually, if, if the money is going into any account, we're going to put a budget together. And that was Mayor Williams' wish. So what you have before you for the first time ever in the history of the city is you have all of the budgets, uh, here. They're tapped and they're identified. And as you recall, I gave you the budget last year on high level and then I sense that providing these benefits. So if there are any questions, I will entertain them until such time. I just want to say thank you for everything.
Any questions?
What type of interest would be anticipated with this, with the, uh?
Certificate of Obligation?
Right.
Four point three percent.
Okay. Not bad. When did recreational purposes become, I thought the 4B was just for infrastructure?
Uh, Councilmember, if you recall, we, uh, about two years ago, we met with committee and added the recreational center. But nothing has been spent and nothing will be spent until we go back to that committee. Until such time, we will continue to enjoy the four point three percent increase.
Have we went before the 4B Committee yet and added this?
Yes, sir, we did that during your administration.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, you added recreational purposes?
Yes, sir.
Wait, you, you don't, you don't need to add, it is an authorized project. So 4Bs, it's, it's part of what's called the Development Corporation Act. It was intended to do economic development. Infrastructure, public infrastructure property, projects were added as an authorized project. But really, the sole purpose of this initially was to incentivize economic development. So it, I mean, obviously, the, the 4B Board cannot approve and Council can't bless projects that aren't specifically authorized in the section. Infrastructure being one of them, recreational being one of them.
You're absolutely correct. So money will be spent, we will go to the committee first, bring up their recommendations to City Council for that.
Did we, we start a new 4B, uh, committee? Do, do we have a new one or?
Yes, sir.
We don't have a new?
No.
Oh, so the ones that spent on there, how long?
Quite a while. I don't have the exact dates.
And all of them is, was at this?
They served until the Council replaced it.
I know, but they was all at this adjustment, putting recreational purposes in this.
Councilmember, uh, that, what the recreation was done under your administration when I was.
Nope, that's why I'm asking.
Chair of that community, and then I resigned from that community.
You resigned?
Yes, so, so that's still, yeah, the, our whole community center was under there. And remember, we, we, when, you know, we met with a whole bunch of people regarding.
It's filled or was the chair of the community?
Yeah, I've got resigned.
Well, she was there before you came.
Okay, well, at any rate, um, 4B includes recreation and all those other.
And any recommendation will come before the body.
Well, yeah, y'all, I mean, we can't spend money. They can't even spend money until you bless it. You're approving every project, every expenditure. Right now, you're approving their annual budget as part of your overall budget.
That's correct.
May I entertain a motion if there are no more questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the general fund budget, the enterprise fund budget.
You can simply approve the ordinance as presented, it has everything attached to it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, approve the, the budget ordinance as presented.
Second. Motion has been made to approve the budget ordinance, uh, by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, second by Councilmember Jones, all in favor?
Uh, we need a record.
Oh, yes, okay.
Both this and the next one will be recorded.
Absolutely, absolutely. Can I get a record vote? Councilmember Bigby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Abar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Nay.
Votes have been recorded, three yes, yeas, one nay, the motion is passed.
Agenda item seven B, discussion consideration of impossible action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas, providing for the levy and collection of admissible larynx taxes on the City of Arcola set for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Provided the date on which such an admissible larynx taxes shall be due and payable, provided for penalty and interest on all taxes not timely paid, provided for servability, and repelling all other ordinances or part of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict with, with here, with Director Inez Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and Council, we are proposing the tax rate remain the same, point six four nine six one nine. That includes, uh, an M and O rate of point five zero nine eight six four and a debt service rate of point one three nine seven five one.
Make a motion that we approve the collection of that, although it has the rate stated in the ordinance.
Second. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, second by Councilmember Jones. May I get a recorded vote, please? Councilmember Bigby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Abar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Motion has been passed.
Will there be a hold schedule session? Oh, I'm sorry, I do apologize, we're going back to, are we doing State of the City first or?
Yeah, we're going to City Council, City Council comments. Mayor, we've got Fort Ben Harold. Oh, yeah, you got Fort Ben Harold.
Last one is, see, uh, um, discussion consideration of impossible action to approve an ordinance of the City, Council of the City of Arcola designating the Fort Ben Harold as the official newspaper of the City of Arcola, Texas for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, provided for repeal, provided for servability, and provided an effective date. City Secretary Ingrid Flurnaway, this is just to make sure that we designate the newspaper that we've been using.
Annual housekeeping matter. Unless y'all want to change papers, we've had luck with it.
May I entertain a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the Fort Ben Harold as the official newspaper of the City of Arcola.
Second. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, second by Councilmember Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Let this sound with City Council comments.
Now we will be going to City Council comments, agenda item ten. I need to see you, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any comments from City Council members at this time?
Yes, I like the driveway. Real nice, good job on the driveway. Yeah, and we say now we just need some shrubbery and a little, um, and then a little blue stripe in the front so that see what the city all. But the shrubbery would be nice, though.
All right, welcome. Um, Mayor Pro Tem?
No comment.
Councilmember Jones?
I, I'd just like to say I'm, I'm thankful and really happy the way the City, uh, Mayor and Council have been working very diligently to bring the city forward. And I'm just thankful that so far, I just only hate that the citizens don't come out to get to hear for themselves what's going on and have to hear secondhand or distorted stuff. But again, I'm just thankful that the city's moving forward.
Uh, Councilmember Burton?
I am so glad that, uh, Ms. Jones made the comments she made about citizens not coming out and getting stuff secondhand. I guess that's what she meant, secondhand. But that page, that, that, that Facebook page that everybody is against puts out a lot of information, some good, some negative, some just funny. But, uh, they hear a lot and they see a lot. And I read a I A D from the, uh, PD today and I thought it was funny that we could put together so many mistruths by our chief and our mayor. I mean, so many. And, and I thought it was a shame. But we sit here today, we do all these accolades and things like that, but city got a long way to go. It's all like that. Long way to go.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right, we're moving back up to agenda item three A, State of the City, Mayor Vito V. Williams.
Thank you. Um, first, before I go and talk about the State of the City, I want to take a moment to present a certificate of achievement to Chief Carr for her nomination for the U.S. Attorneys Award.
Hey, good.
So I, I just say, Chief Carr, I really appreciate everything that you do for the city.
So, I'm just saying, Chief Carr, I really appreciate everything that you do for the city. And it basically says, the City of Arcola would like to thank you for your service and dedication to the City of Arcola. We present this certificate of achievement for the U.S. Attorneys Award nomination. Chief Erica N. Carr Bryant, Abar. The City of Arcola is doing great things and we appreciate you, Chief. Keep doing what you're doing. You must be doing so right, let's be. All right. Now, tonight, what I want to do, as you can tell from our budget numbers, the State of the City is good. And I've enjoyed being able to serve our residents in this capacity. As you know, many of you who live in the city or whatever may know, the challenges, however, has been, the things that concern me most is the State of Arcola. Sometimes the absolute ugliness that divides us and keeps too many of our residents from wanting to engage in the public discourse of the city. I had a resident recently tell me that they were a little scared to come up here to show any support from me or this administration because they may end up on Facebook page. And they have a business and they have a family. And they didn't want to get involved in that. And boy, that really pains me, that we are at this point. Last week, I put out a video about the need for better politics, not just in our city, but just in Germany, after another killing in Utah based on people's political viewpoints. I was informed about Councilmember Burton's response to my video, in which he unfortunately calls me a liar, stating that I lied to the nation in my presentation of divisiveness and dangerous nature about our own politics right here in Arcola. And he particularly disagreed with my characterization that I was cursed and threatened in the Arcola parking lot incident in June this year, suggesting that I was the aggressor and that I assaulted an officer. Given that there's been so much talk about that video, I thought today, that today, I'd allow you all to decide for yourself. After I said my piece, that's it. After I've said my piece, I'm happy to leave the future of our city in your hands. But I will say to the residents of Arcola, if we want better for the City of Arcola, we can no longer afford to sit out or allow our voices to be silenced and striving to create a healthier environment. In other words, we can no longer bury our heads in the sand and hope and pray that these issues just go away or that somebody else does the work. We make the necessary choices about how we look going forward and we need as many of you who will take that stand with us. So I'm going to address these issues in the full light of day, not behind the cloak of anonymity on social media, but straight to the faces of those who constantly call me out in large senseless, immature and potentially dangerous attacks at the staff and officials of our city. So to the staff here at the City of Arcola, to the council, if nobody else will stand, please know that I am your biggest cheerleader and I will always stand with you. So let's get started. Please be advised that some of the language you may hear may be a little suspect, so. So first of all, let me say, if you want to see the video of my State of the Politics, it's on our website. And then we have Mayor Burton's response, you can go on his page and see his response.
You can.
Uh, well, yeah, it is what it said. So here's the video from the parking lot that day. That wasn't shown. What, what some of you all can't, this video, it's a little, it's a little grainy, but you know what? At some point, we're going to discuss sending this video to a certified agency for additional forensic audio analysis to clean up some of the strangeness.
Please do.
What they didn't want you to see is, you have the video, Chief, the original video, where Mr., the one that was sent to ABC News and the one that was put out on the, on the web, their rendition of what happened out there, is at the end of it, he doesn't, do you have that one?
I'm trying to pull it up.
Yeah. At the end of it, well, look, I'll play it for you. I'm in City Hall, I'm supposed to be. I'm in contact with Mayor, he said, he said, bring it all to yourself now.
Don't get you, don't get you, don't get you. Nobody wants to talk to her. I'm in prison. Well, hey Jim, you see what we got? You fuck.
That part at the end was cut out the video, the explicit that he lodges. So they come in and they want to make this create this narrative that there was nothing going on out here and they were just peacefully in the parking lot. Like I said, what they didn't want to see is the state of mind that he was in the entire time. So while Councilmember Burton has stated that neither of them said anything derogatory to me in that parking lot, which is what he stated on ABC News, that clearly was not the case. I have statements from witnesses to whom I was, who I was talking to just prior to going over to speak to them, who have attested to the fact that I was not angry or anything prior to going over to them. And the only reason I went over to try to talk to them was to find a way to get along for the sake of the city, since Councilmember Burton was going to be seated. Both Councilmember Burton on the news report and Keith Washington on the video knew that I just wanted to talk to them. Both of them stated that they didn't want to talk, as you heard him say, long after the encounter had begun. So to say aloud, "I don't want to talk to you," implies that I was telling him that I just wanted to talk. Now, don't get me wrong, at some point, I grew tired of being called a dumb bee, the N-word, an effing coon and an MF. That's the point where he picks up his phone and decides to record, providing a narrative that he wants you all to have, that they were just out there peacefully and I came along as an aggressor. That simply was not the case. As far as me assaulting Sergeant Miller, I'm going to dress this head on, I did not do so. I did touch Sergeant Miller with my finger as I was pointing at him as I was completely rattled by that incident in the parking lot, although I made a point to stand my ground in the moment. I then went to the first officer I saw, Officer Miller, to report the threat that had been, that had been made when Keith Washington said that he kills MS who cross him. We are all aware. You know what, I'm not going to go to that point right now. But what I will say is this, Keith Washington is the guy that Councilmember Burton has decided to align himself with. Let me give you a little background on Keith Washington. Keith Washington, first of all, is a relative of mine, who came to this city seeking a benefit from my administration. And when I told him no, he became upset. He went to my council members and tried to get them to turn and to grant him a contract. But then that, that didn't work, he got mad and he went to the total opposite side to Mr. Burton, where he found a home. Keith Washington was employed as a Prince George's County Police Officer who had been detailed to the Prince George's County Department of Homeland Security as a deputy director at that time. Washington was detailed to the DHS on about August 2nd, 2024. Washington's duties at the time were primarily administrative, dealing with obtaining funding and grants for the various public safety agencies of Prince George's County, Maryland. Washington was appointed to the position by Prince George's County Executive Jack Johnson. His prior detail was the executive protection to Jack Johnson. Now, in 2007, Jack Johnson wanted to distance himself from Mr. Washington as a result of an incident that had occurred in his home. He decided that, I ain't going to go through all that. Johnson said that the relationship between himself and Keith Washington was not a personal one and that he wanted to distance himself from the altercation that happened in his home. And Johnson, he also said that he didn't believe Washington should resume his position as the deputy director. Fast forward to 2011, Jack Johnson, along with a number of other people in his office, were indicted and charged and sent to prison for corruption, for misappropriating funds, fraudulent actions. Anyway, millions of dollars dealing with federal funds. Keith Washington wanted me to hire him, wanted him to, wanted me to give a contract with him to do the same thing here at the City of Arcola in Grant to get to, so that he could write grants and get funds, federal funds for the City of Arcola. I decided not to do so. And so, he went to Mayor Burton, who has wrapped his arms around him. But let me tell you, Mr. Burton, I would caution you as well because Keith Washington does not play. And just to let you know, Keith Washington does not play, he has a message for you too. So what I'm saying, Arcola, is that we need to find a way to, uh, let me just play this way, since I think I'm connected to this.
This is what we're going to do. If Fred Burton fucks with you, I'm going to cut his head off.
So you want to sit up and say that I wasn't threatened out in that parking lot? I will, I will put my word up against what you put out there every single day. You said in your ABC 13 news report that nothing happened. They didn't say a word to me. The reason why I decided to bring this stuff all up, y'all, because. Well, to show number one, you lie every single day and you put that stuff out there as if it's true. You know, sitting up there saying, y'all didn't say anything. When you can clearly see, that is not what happened in that parking lot. But this is not merely about me and Mr. Burton or me and Keith Washington. This is about them and whomever would sit in this seat. If it were you, you would be the one being attacked today. It's not personal to me. Keith Washington went from supporting me to trying to utilize my council members to go against me, to going all the way to teaming up with Fred Burton. It's not personal, it's a matter of his agenda. And Fred Burton, best be careful as well, like I said, because he has messages for you as well. This is why I was standing up in that parking lot and why I'm standing up today and why I will continue to stand up for this city. If we get lax and we give them access to the purse strings of this city, what happened 30 years ago in this city and what happened in Maryland over 10 years ago will easily happen in Arcola today. As you see, this city is in great financial position. The funds from the COs that we just received would be a tremendous added benefit for them. So yes, no matter what I need to do to prevent that, I am willing to do. No matter what goes on, we cannot be afraid to have a voice. You cannot be afraid to have a voice. And most importantly, we cannot be afraid to use it. Today, I decided to use mine. And I will continue to do so because we cannot allow this stuff to threaten our city. So, that is all. And you can decide for yourself, residents of Arcola, whether nothing happened in that parking lot or whether I was, as I said, cursed and threatened in that parking lot. So, very happy. At this time, do we have any, uh, any agenda items?
We have an exact, we will need an exact extension, from Fred Burton.
Okay. So at this time, it is 7:06 PM, we will now convene and shut up the executive session. You can. Can I get everybody to go out to the community center? This time is 7:16 PM and we will resume back into regular session. At this time, there is no business coming out of the executive session. May I entertain a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Biggie, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Abar for adjournment at 7:16 PM. All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? We are so adjourned.